I'd like to call to order the January 23, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's not that much on the agenda for those in the government class, so we should be out by seven. If we're not, we'll sign your papers then, so you can go home and study. Mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment, in partnership with families and our community. Our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought we just went over this.
Opposed? The motion made by Mr. Di Lorenzo and seconded by Dan Esrati has passed. Questions and comments from interested citizens? We have no interested citizens or comments from. Update on questions or comments raised in the past. Do you have anything?
No, the last time we met was in December, and I believe the person who got up to speak was actually a high school student who began to sing. So if you'd like me to sing back, I could do that.
Yes, we would. Please do that.
I'd like to see that.
That's a no.
Oh, that's a no?
Cordell said he wants to sing with you.
That would be a double no.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 12 singing meeting, regular meeting? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved by Anthony Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Chris Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, we have a first reading? That's been added, I see. A first reading of the policy to approve the first organizational charts. Do you want to describe what that might be?
All these first readings, there's a first reading, this was added, it was just one that was omitted from the last meeting. It was a first reading. We'd like to actually, I thought we were going to waive the first reading and go right to second on this one, only because we were just changing inside the chart for the policy, we were just changing the amount of assistant principals.
Right. I think what we were looking to do was to ensure that the chart reflected the number of assistant principals at the high school. The chart was reflecting dean of students, and it was not reflecting what actually is occurring at the high school. So we felt it would be best to update it.
First reading, wait the second.
Right. So this is going to be a first reading, and then we're waiving the second reading.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy manual update? Moved by Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anthony has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, the second reading, do I have a motion to waive the second reading of the organizational chart policy manual update?
First, motion.
And seconded by Dylan. Have that? Motion by Chris. We have a second reading of the policy manual update. Do you want to describe that, Chris?
These are just policies, most of them. Some of them organizational charts, again, the same as the first two, that was omitted. The rest of them all have to do with the business office. It's just a streamlining way that we cleaned up the language for, you know, who does what in the district and how it gets reported to the business office, and then how the business office moves on. So there's acceptance of gifts and grants and donations, the use of the district credit card, just regular budget transfers that Patrick makes his transfers, and the budget line codes and the way they work, and the student health services. So these are all second reading. We did them, I think, a meeting prior to the last meeting. Somehow they got lost in transition, I think, somewhere.
That's because I wasn't here.
Possibly.
No.
I make a motion to...
Thank you. Stacy, we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, energy presentation. Jill Parastella. Now the sole person in our energy...
It's been a whole year again. I just want to view this as a slideshow. Yes, I'm the sole energy person now for the whole district, which is a little intimidating, but I think that we've got a good grasp on what we're doing. And before I get into all the slides, I just want to refresh your memory that the program did start in August of 2013, and the first energy manager was hired, energy specialist was hired, in the fall of 2014. I didn't come on board until March of 2016, after the first energy specialist retired. So I've been here for about two and a half years. And what's really great about this year is that this was our final year in our contract with Synergistic, which is the consulting company that we contracted with for education. And so our last payments to that company were, I think, last month?
It was December.
December. So we're done paying them, but as long as we continue implementing the program and running the program and submitting the data, they will provide lifetime program support to us in the form of checking data whenever requested. Their engineers are at our service if we have questions or want information checked or simulations ran. They will come out, or I can remote visit with them. So all their training and all their personnel will continue to support us as long as we run the program, which is a great, that's a huge benefit. And now that we're not paying them, that's an automatic six-figure net savings back to the district. So that's really great. So now all the savings from the program that we're reaping stay with the district. We're not paying anybody anymore, except me, but that comes out of the savings. So it was really exciting this year to finally finish that contract. So the program goals, I always want to harp on this first one, that the first goal of the program is to improve the comfort and conditions in the schools and the classrooms. We want to address any comfort complaints. We want people to be safe and warm and comfortable while they're teaching. We want the students to be able to learn the best they can. So we're not looking to cut costs or save energy when it's the academic day, when people are learning and working. That's not what it's about. We want to create that culture of awareness, and we want to reduce waste where we can, where it's not needed, and save that money for the schools. We just want to, all that savings, it's just money that we don't have to spend on utilities. We want to reduce So this year, changes that impacted the energy use for the district. Last year was colder. Well, I'm reporting on fiscal year, so when I say last year, 17, 18, because we're in 18, 19 now, so this is the culmination of the last fiscal year. And it was colder than the previous year. So we did use more energy last year, which is okay. The more you use, the more opportunity you have to save. So it was a little bit colder in the heating months, and it was cooler in the summer months as well. So we shouldn't have needed as much air conditioning as the previous year. The cost of commodities, the electric remains stable, hasn't changed in a few years. It doesn't look like it's going to change. Natural gas rose a little bit, and oil rose 25% from the previous year, which is pretty standard across the industry. Most districts saw a rise of 20% to 25% in fuel oil. We only use it in a couple of places here, this building, and we use it when we have interruptible for our natural gas. If we get a call saying, you know, we have to switch over because it's going to be cold, or... And our electric and fuel, we do have third-party supplies for, and those are fixed contracts. So the prices, they may rise year to year, but they will not change throughout the year, unlike the marketplace. This year, equipment and mechanical changes. We did install a new high-efficiency hot water system at the high school on the C level, and that services the center part of the school, the nurse's office, where that cozy café is. And it's very similar to the one we put in the boiler room. It's very, very efficient, so we should see some savings from that. All the boilers were serviced again over the summer. We do have a new water treatment contractor, which is great. If you treat the water for the system, you'll see some better efficiency. If you don't, you will have a reduction in efficiency. And we're continuing to make upgrades in the safeties and controls on the boilers. The program savings. So for the life of the program, since its implementation until the end of last fiscal year, there was a $964,000 savings, which is about 11%. The last fiscal year, there was a $291,000 savings. And when I say savings, it's that amount of money that we didn't spend on utilities that we otherwise would have had we not been doing all the things we do with the energy program. And that last fiscal year was a 17.5% savings. And you can see that the whole life of the program, it has a less, smaller percentage of savings, and that's due to having to, when we came on board, having to reboot the program. And so your average is going to be a little smaller because we had to overcome a lot of roadblocks. And the percentage last fiscal year is about 3% from 16, 17. So we did have some gains, which is really great. And you can see the little pie chart. That dark purple slice is the program savings. So you can see how much of the whole pie is the utility expenditure. So you can see what part of the pie that program savings is visually, and it's a good chunk. So it's good that we're able to do that. And 17.5% is good. I want to see it more at 20 or above, and I think it's absolutely achievable in this district, so we're really working towards that. Our environmental impact. In 17, 18, we prevented 2,123 metric tons of CO2 from being released into the atmosphere. That's a big amount. It's equivalent to 236 passenger cars not driven, 29,000 tree seedlings grown for 10 years. It's equivalent to 225,000 plastic bags not being produced. Each kilogram of CO2 is what's needed to produce five plastic bags. So 400,000 cheeseburgers. It takes about three kilograms to produce a cheeseburger. So next time you're out eating a fast-food cheeseburger, think about carbon footprint. And so, I mean, we're saving money in the district, but we're also, we are impacting the environment in a really big way, and that's huge. It's just a good deal for everybody, a good deal for us. It's a good deal for the taxpayers. It's a good deal for the students. We're making the schools better. So it's a win-win, and the earth is happy. Moving forward, we have capital work in progress, and how it will impact the energy program is, well, the things that we're adding are lighting. We're adding lighting to all the fields that are going in. It'll be LED lighting, which is much more efficient than the metal halide lights that are out there now. It's brighter, and it's a lot less wattage. We're adding more of it, though. So it may come out to be a wash, or there may be more usage, but because it's more efficient, we're going to get a lot more out of it. And LED lighting is the industry standard now. It's what we should be adding. Anywhere that we replace lights or retrofit lights, we should be adding LED. Not only is it more efficient, but it has, you know, health benefits, score benefits for schools. It's just better lighting. And then we are putting in the new chiller plant at the high school. The new chillers will have a higher efficiency than what is there now. We're getting about a 0.05 kilowatt per ton added efficiency, which you'll see it in the fact that we don't have to put as big chillers in there now. It should be able to service the entire school, and we will have the same load on it now, but because they're more efficient, we should be able to get more out of the chillers. And as long as we run them at a almost full load, you have more efficiency. It's kind of like a refrigerator. If it's more full, then it's more efficient. If it's half-full, it's not as efficient. Kind of the same thing with chillers. And the EER rating is the energy efficiency rating, and the COP is the coefficient of performance, and those are really good ratings for these chillers. So what's back is efficient equipment.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
You said that, if you can go back to the list you just showed before. You said that EER rating is good.
Yes.
Could you tell me what the span is? So 17 is what we got rated, but it goes from what number to what number?
I don't know what the range is exactly. I know that you want to see, like, 17, it's actually 17.4. And that's, it's one of the best ratings. I can get you the range. I don't have it off the top of my head, but when I researched them, they're top of efficiencies.
It would just be good for the public to know, like, when we're sharing this, just so that they know what the ratings mean, because I don't know what a 17 is. You're saying it's good. I'm sure it is.
Right.
Just to give us an idea of...
What's the rating now?
Zero to 17.
What?
Zero to 17.
That's a good...
She said 17.4, so maybe zero to 18.
What is the chiller working efficiently now at? Do we have a number for that?
Now, the efficiency on the chillers we have is 0.75 kilowatts per ton. But you have to remember that these efficiencies are, they're the best efficiency in the lab with no anomalies going on, and fresh out of, you know, like, the lot, you know? So the chillers we have now have been run at full capacity. They can't really handle the load in the building as it is now because they weren't designed for the added cafeteria and gym that were added onto the building. So we're trying to run them for that. And the system is just, it's been, it's all over the place. So they haven't been run very efficiently, and they've been run at full capacity. So even though it's only, it seems like a small gain in efficiency, it's actually going to be quite large.
Thank you.
Sure. So when we do a capital project like this, it's accounted for in the data. So I'll make adjustments to the data as far as, you know, the old equipment that was there, the size of it, all the information for that, and I'll have all the new equipment, the information for that, and the data will be adjusted for with the new equipment so that we're able to compare, as we are now, with our baseline use apples to apples. So we're not, so we can, so, how do I explain it? So that we're not saying, hey, this program's saving all this money without taking into consideration the fact that we're replacing equipment, because that has to be considered. You know, the program can't be credited with gains in efficiency of equipment, so that will be adjusted for, just like weather is adjusted for. And by doing this, we can track the new efficiencies and the new usage, so you can see your ROI, and you can see the payback on the new equipment, and how long that takes, and any anomalies with new equipment will present themselves. And that'll all be done with professional engineers and building simulation tools. And it's really, it's very technical. It's not just, you know, throwing in new numbers. It's checked and verified, not just by me, but by people with, you know, licenses.
Jill, can I just interrupt?
Sure.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the heat cap software, it makes adjustments both for equipment changes, building use, like, in other words, if we shuttered a building, brought a building on?
Right, like we did.
With the dorm, the South River Dorm?
Right.
Weather, and the price of commodities as well?
Yes.
Oil and electricity. So it accounts for all those things that can affect your overall usage and the cost, so you can compare apples to apples.
Right.
Your baseline.
So all that information is calculated in the software, and the data's normalized, so we can compare it and say whether we actually are saving or not. And it helps us to identify our base loads of the buildings that don't change, so we can see if we're using energy where we don't need to be or we shouldn't be. With the new chiller, recommendations from the energy program regarding that work, if there's one thing I can drive home about this work, is it's that first, that first piece, is once we put the chiller plant in, that whole building system, the building management system that's computerized, that schedules the building, that we have all the temperatures set on, that needs to be reset and brought back to design. The equipment needs to be retro-commissioned, so that we take that building system that's so out of whack right now and bring it back to its original state, bring all the equipment back to its original default design spec settings, and run the building how it was designed to be run, and then we will see if there's, where the problems are, because they'll present themselves then. Right now, the building system is, it's had so many changes made to it because of problems with the equipment and because of the added loads to the building, that it's not efficient, and it's kind of all over the place. So the perfect time to retro-commission and to reset a building system is when you're replacing a big piece of the HVAC like this. So that would be my biggest recommendation with this work. And then to implement an aggressive water treatment program with the water. So, because if you don't have that, you will have a reduction in efficiency, and it'll wear on the equipment. So those are the biggest pieces of that. And then, this is everybody's program. It's not me. I certainly can't, you know, take care of a whole program in a district this big without everybody doing their part, and everybody does do their part in this district. It's a very strong district, and I think everybody here really wants to do the right thing. I see that all the time. And I think that by running this program and continuing the program now that we're not paying and reaping those savings for the district, we're doing the right thing for responsible use of our resources and our taxpayer money. And I just, I can't say enough good things about this district. Oh, and last year, I reported on the buildings that received Energy Star awards. I can't report on that this year because the EPA froze the Energy Star website in the fall to redo all their metrics, which is great. They redid everything so that buildings nationwide are compared with much larger pools of similarly attributed buildings. So the metrics are much more accurate, and the awards will be more prestigious now, also much harder to get. So we do have to submit the data. We can do that now, except that EPA shut down because of the government shutdown. So as soon as that's over and we can do that, we'll be doing that again.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions on this?
I just have one. I get on a soapbox about solar. And as we go forward with the Facilities Committee, and as we go forward with improving our buildings, and any buildings that get new roofs, I'd really like the district to look into the savings, perhaps the savings that we can achieve through solar, you know, not only making the pocketbooks of the taxpayers happier, but also the earth happier, and also the students more engaged, because we can hook the whole solar, you know, program into the curriculum and make it part of the science program or whatever, ecology program. Just wanted to do that. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Reports by the Board of Education committees, policy, anything coming up in the future?
Yeah. The Policy Committee, me and Elsie have started already. We took on undertaking, we're going to look at almost all the policies. Well, we are looking at all of them. And any policies that were a couple of years past that haven't been reviewed, we are reviewing every policy. So every policy should have in your board docs by the end of this year, I think. We're hoping to finish it by the end of this year, a review date of 2019. And as we're doing this, we're reading each policy in board docs, so we're making sure that when it was uploaded to board docs, when it was, that it still has the same language, nothing was left out or omitted, and everything is correct. Most of the policies we started, and we did a lot, are all policies that are New York State education law-based. They're all, every policy refers to a law. We're just making sure that the law today is the same as it was eight years ago, or five years ago, so that the language in there, it is correct. Even though it'll say, you know, "Refer to Law 2310" in New York State law, it may be different on the New York State website than what we have. So it's a lot of work. We're starting to do that. The other thing is, the co-board should know that we're going to see a lot more policies probably come through here. It's not any reason that anything is bad or done wrong. It's just that as we go through these, every time we see one, we've been, we flagged numerous ones the other day, when we sent them to each administrative department, lucky you guys, and they have to just review all these policies just to make sure that the language is updated, everything that is according to the state law, and whatnot. So you will see more of these on every board meeting, but it's just because I really want to just get everybody with a 2019 reference date, so everyone's reviewed, so they're all consistent.
How many policies have you mentioned to me that we...
I think yesterday we looked at 135 policies.
And how many have we reviewed since we really got our act together to update policies?
A lot, probably about another 100.
Another 150. I mean, we usually, we started this, when I first started on this board, because I started with the policies that were outdated, or the policies that the state gave back to us and said, this is the new language, this is new. So that took a while because we had to get those policies that were mandated to be changed, changed in our system. Now, we kind of did a lot of that. Now we're going back to double-check to make sure that the ones that had no changes for the last two or three years, they are still consistent with everything.
I just wanted to also, of course, welcome Mr. Beeler, but over and above that, mention that all of the policies are on board docs, which can be accessed by the public. In case you're interested in a specific policy, you may go to board docs and, under policies, find the specific one you are interested in. Or if you're sitting home with absolutely nothing to do, you can read them all. And it'll take you a while.
And can I just add to that?
Yes.
I think it's important for the community to know that policy is what dictates how we operate.
Yes.
And so it's probably, I shouldn't use the word probably, it is one of the great works that a board does. So updating this, you know, going through the policies, making sure that they are relevant to us in 2019, is really important. to us in 2019 is really important. And, you know, Eric made a comment the other day. He said, every time I would call the attorneys, they would always say, have you checked your policies? Because policy dictates what we can and cannot do. So it's really important for the public to know that this is critical work to the board and that, you know, they should also, where, our work is going to be to put in board docs a more transparent way for the community to be able to find policies that are relevant. Because we want to make sure that people understand that we just don't make decisions at Hock. They're based in policy or in law.
And policy guides procedure.
Correct.
And procedure is what our practices are.
Yes.
Don, you got here just in time to talk about the Facilities Committee.
We made some great progress. I think everything's on track. Patrick's team is doing a really good job of lining everything up, waiting for the approvals from the state. I think all of the, the field designs are, I believe, were finalized with most of that?
Yep. There were very few comments and inquiries from the state head department, which is good. And for the most part, they were all addressed pretty, you know, pretty easily and quickly. So we're on track.
I think so. Everything else is on track. I think all the contract stuff is lining up. Anything else that?
We had our meeting on the 15th, right?
Yep.
And we, we had some final changes, which we're still ironing out on everything. You know, we talked about those final design changes around the project. Couple of other things came up, we talked about, actually related to DOT project they're doing, they're going to do the access road and another access road on the southern edge of the CB field. And probably we talked about potentially some conduit with fiber there for the future. And we may move ahead with a little telecommunications plan with RAN, you know, sort of lay that out and identify where all our existing lines and cables are. That was another piece of it. I think the final thing, which is not related to the capital projects, was discussing the Harriman Center a little bit and renewing the lease with the Village of Harriman.
Right.
For the next couple of weeks, we'll probably put that before the board that we can do. It's been a pretty good range.
And we made some nice changes to the, one of the fields to make sure that they stayed nice, I guess, for a long period of time.
That's right.
I want to thank the committees. They've been doing a wonderful job, and a lot of time, and a lot of effort, and a lot of expertise. And it's, it's much appreciated. Don, do you have anything from Orange County School Boards Association?
They do not have a January meeting, so.
But we are heading off, Hugh and Stacy and I are, are heading off in, around the, what is it, the February 10th?
Yes.
To go up to Albany to have meetings with our state legislators and advance the district's causes, our wishlist. And Patrick and Elsie are going to get us a talking points, probably, what, at the end of this meeting, or maybe a little later?
I think right now, Patrick is working on it, right this second.
Right this second, you're doing that now?
Final paragraph.
Okay, great. So thank you. So that's what, that's what we're, we're up to on that. Any other board reports that I have? Personnel?
I respectfully request the approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion from Mr. Beeler? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Suzanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, business and financial. Patrick?
I also respectfully request the approval of the items under the business financial section, which include our standard monthly financial reports for November. And you may have noted in the check register, there's sort of an unusually large payment to Albright Electric that has to do with our Smart Schools Bond Act project, about $244,000. So we didn't really discuss that facilities much, but that's another capital project that's underway.
Right.
And you might have noted that. We have a couple of donations. A donation of $1,000 from the United States Tennis Association for Athletic Program. We have a donation of $40 from York Cause LLC to North Main Elementary School. We have some obsolete items from the UCC, technology items, and some items from athletics, physical education equipment, I think listed from the middle school. And two contracts for your approval, one with John A. Coleman School for special need students, and an agreement with Education Hall LLC for professional development.
That's for professional development services?
For staff, yep.
Do I have a, a motion? Mr. Beeler's motion?
Second, I can.
Mr. Ezroti has seconded. Is there any discussion? I just have a comment, being a Luddite in, in all of this, to find the astonishing amount of technology items that are obsolete just because of the nature of the changing technology. It's astounding to me. And, I mean, I see, on the one hand, I'm going, oh, look at all this waste. And on the other hand, I'm saying, we are really upgrading the systems here in this district. So I thank you for that, sort of.
We have one advantage in that because we waited a little later, our technology's going to be that much better. So that in the technology area, it's actually nice the way Bargo planned it because now we'll be getting the newest, the newest stuff now.
Yeah, we skipped some platforms, we skipped some stuff by, not necessarily by choice, but it puts us in a much better position as a result. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, corrective, do I have a motion to accept the 2017-18 corrective action plan?
Second.
It moved by Chris, seconded by Suzanne. Any comments? Do you want to tell us what this is about?
Yeah, sure, John. It's basically related to our audit of 2017-18 audit report and financial statements. And the auditors came up with three findings, if you will, or sentations. The first one related to the school lunch fund and use of purchase orders for internal catering and invoicing. The school lunch fund tended to invoice towards the end of the year. It's, you know, sort of a business practice where they kind of wrap it all up and close their own books. They recommended a protocol, a procedure that we're going to follow, we're trying to use an order form for internal catering, and use a purchase order for, for, you know, all those types of orders, and invoice monthly, you know, at the end of each month. That was one finding. Another had to do with our fixed asset program. So fixed assets are table, technology items, equipment, vehicles, that kind of thing. We haven't been really diligent about tagging and tracking our fixed assets. The non-technology-related fixed assets, Bargo does a real good job with, with the technology items, but some of the other things, we've gotten a little lax on. We, we do record them in our database, but we haven't been actively tagging them. So the corrective action plan for that would be to re-inventory everything next year. We've reached out to a vendor, CBiz, the company that does that. It's a very sort of tedious process. We literally go through every building and every room in every building and re-inventory and tag everything. And then it's all compiled into a database. Going forward, we, you know, when there's dispositions and.
We can track them.
We track them, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we do track it now, we're just not tagging it.
Yeah.
As diligently and consistently as we should. Let's see, and the final piece was on the Lowe's. We have a credit card and account with Lowe's. There was a, an address of an employee rather than one of our buildings, which was really Lowe's error. And it was a purchase of some cabinets, and we failed also to use a purchase order for that purchase. So it's one of those things, it's a, it's something you're, you're always working on using purchase orders and a purchase order system prior to, you know, the ordering of goods or services. And so, so basically what we're doing is we're asking the board to approve this action plan. We have done many of these things. We're going to hold this out in the next year or two. And we also submit this to the state controller and SED.
I mean, the reason I ask, we have it here. The board can, can see that, but I wanted to.
Yes.
An explanation for the public as to what this means, because it is corrective action plan. What does this mean? What is, what do we have to correct? And it's pretty much every year, we will have, this is, I shouldn't say it's minor, but it's, it's, it's a result of our yearly audit.
Exactly.
And responding to it. Yes.
When you say you're tagging the, all the equipment, are we talking about putting just labeling on it? Are we talking barcodes, RFID, so that down the line, it, when we do a re-inventory, makes it a little bit easier, a little bit quicker to do?
Normally, it's barcodes. So it'd be tagged, like say, this table, you have a certain area.
Right.
You have to tag it. We're right in the corner of this, to get conventions about how you do the tagging. And then the, during the re-inventory, they have actually like a scanner.
Okay. So barcode scanning and just run through and click off?
Yep.
Okay.
That's why the audits are important, though, because we have a third party coming in and looking at our practices. And so even though we have this correction, corrective action plan, it's really important that the community know that we don't audit ourselves. Some other agency comes in and audits what we do, and then they give us their, their feedback. So that's an important piece.
And we, we have an external auditor, which does our audit report and audits our financial statements. That's what this is a result of. We have an internal auditor who's another third party. It's an auditing firm, an accounting firm, who does our internal audit of our internal controls. And we're in the queue for the state controller to cuss up any, any day now.
And that's what, every five years, the state?
Every five years. So we were notified in October that they were coming, and we sort of, we said, well, we have this big referendum, can we kick the can down the road for a little while? And they said, yes. And they said, well, we'll be there by the end of the year, and we hadn't heard from them. So I assume someone, some other district was slotted in.
Yes.
And we're just waiting for our turn.
Well, this is the state of New York.
But, but the good news is, it didn't find any material issues.
No.
And some of the items that they audited, we redirected our internal auditors like four years ago to look at Lowe's and Home Depot and stuff because it was a concern.
Did we have a motion on this? We have a motion.
I mean, considering that we have such a big district, we have these three kind of.
It's pretty minor.
Minor.
They are.
Things that need to be fixed or changed. I would say it's pretty.
No, no, we're doing, we're, we're in good shape. We're doing it. You guys are doing a good job. Everybody's doing a good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, motion to approve the arrangement on the recommended placements made by the Committee of Special Education and preschool. Special education items, 15.1, 2.3, 4. Do I have a?
Motion.
Motion by Suzanne. And a second by?
Second.
Mr. Ezroti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by board and central office. Chris?
I just want to welcome everyone back for the new year. People moving forward.
Don?
Okay, so I have quite a few things because I've been, I'm going to throw it back to December because our last board meeting was December 12th, I believe. And then the next day, I attended the FBLA induction at the high school. And that was special because the middle school chapter, for the first time, joined. So congratulations to them. And then Pine Tree Readathon, it's always awesome to be a guest speaker. Thank you, Pine Tree Recording. That was such an awesome day to be there in classroom with the kids. The district caroling, that was amazing, from our voice ensemble, brass ensemble from Dr. Krone and Mr. Reagan. I want to acknowledge SAD for their Make-A-Wish. That was a really huge donation that they did. I think that their 2,700 and something cards, you know, donated like over $5,000. And then I visited Smith Clove for their door decorating. That was really cool to see also. And then January, so the CARES committee as chair, we brought in Rohan Murphy as one of the favorite CARES speakers, and he had a really, you know, inspirational message for, I think, everybody. And we invited the community and students as well to come in and hear his really powerful words. So that was our commitment as part of the CARES to, you know, enforce our overarching message. I attended the parent orientation for the rising freshmen, the eighth grade visits. That was always exciting to see those eager faces. Stacy and I went to the College 101, Checks and Balances. That was really cool. The kids got to, as part of one of their business classes, they choose their career, they get a salary, and they get to go around to different stations and spend their money and see what they're left with at the end of the month. So that was really eye-opening for everybody. Same day, I was at the Little Miracles graduation. That was just heartwarming. And then we got a tour of the dub studio. And then I went to the Stars, high school Stars kids came to the middle school, and they're the group that does students' teaching advocacy and resilient skills. And they did a whole social media, very interactive presentation with the middle school students, both seventh and eighth grade. And then the last thing was the Safe School Ambassador Training, which is the district's bystander education program where we kind of take like an inside-out approach to combating, you know, some issues that could be going on in the schools, where the students are taught skills to recognize what's going on within themselves. So they did a training that was hosted by the Youth Bureau, and I thought it was really good, good stuff.
Next time, Don, do you think you could mention the things that you didn't go to? Because I think it would be shorter.
Make me look bad.
I mean, that's.
I was going to say.
No, that's, that's remarkable, and I applaud you for, for all of that. And terrific.
And I just wanted to give a shout out to the high school this week with the dropping off for the midterms and the regents was really awesome because it was in and out, it was organized, it was efficient. I was dreading it because it was my first time doing it. I think my son took the bus last year, but it was really cool. They dropped off, went out. So thank you to have coordinated that.
Elsie, I think you better be worried about your job.
Yeah.
Don?
So I attended a behavioral health with the hospital and Elsie and her team to go over it. And as a result, I know all of the school districts in Orange County are looking to partner up with the various groups, but based on Elsie and her team and how professional they came off, they're going to focus on Monroe first and use a lot of the practices. The team here came off extremely professional, and they felt that it was the best fit, you know, closer to what the professionalism that they were dealing with at the hospital. So they're going to use Monroe as the model to create a behavioral health protocol, procedures, and plug it in. That, that, that was really great for the school, and the fact that we're going to get to help define all of that is, is really good, too. I went to Scoofus's swearing in. That was very nice. It's good to see, you know, a local, a local do well. And I'd like to thank all of the transportation people for getting all of our buses out on the hideous cold morning the other day. That was, that was pretty questionable. A lot of schools couldn't, couldn't accomplish that. So I thought that was pretty impressive that our people got all that done. That's it.
Suzanne?
First, I'd like to thank Jill for the energy presentation. An apology, I apologized for walking in the middle of it, but it was an accident on the doorway. I also attended the Pontry Reading, Readathon. It was so much fun. I love doing that. And please keep inviting us back because I really enjoy that. And I also attended Senator Scoofus's swearing in, and it was very nice to see Monroe Woodbury graduate, achieve, achieve this position. And I'm hoping that he'll do some good things for our district while he's up there in Albany.
Yes.
And I'm hoping that we have more temperatures for the rest of the winter. Well, even if they're not terribly warm, not as cold as it was this month.
Donna?
Thank everyone for coming out. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bargo?
Thank you, Mr. Jades, for the Readathon. It was a pleasure. I attended Mr. Rohan Murphy's presentation. Thank you, Monroe Woodbury Care, Ms. Tauber, and Mr. Casti. It was very, very interesting, especially I brought my own kids and they were amazed and basically got the message, say, there is no excuse of not doing the hard work. So thank you, actually. It was very well-intended.
Eric?
I also attended Rohan Murphy. And a quick plug, I think, for the next MW CARES event in March, right, March, I think? April or March?
April.
April. Ian Hockley's going to be presenting on Dylan's Wings, which is another very popular speaker at MW CARES. So if you weren't able to get to Rohan Murphy, I encourage everybody to come out to see that. I also attended James Scoofus's swearing in, Little Miracles graduation, Pine Tree, a bunch of other things. And I think coupled with the midterm transportation piece, I think, thank you to Mother Nature for not throwing a wrench in the scheduling of that, because we also have regents exams that are administered this week. So thankfully, all of those so far, knock on wood, have been going without a hitch. So thanks to the high school team for that. So thanks to the high school team for that. And that's it.
Patrick?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the building and ground staff and Peter for getting out there on Sunday morning at 4:00 AM to clear the snow off and allow us to have the swearing-in for Senator Scoofus. It was a good job. It wasn't quite as bad as we thought it would be, but they still had to get out there and travel in bad weather and get their fresh mold, get it cleaned up. And I also want to thank the transportation staff for all their efforts over the weekend. You know, people came in to clean off ice buses, start buses, to make sure we could roll on Tuesday, and many districts could not. They had to have two-hour... So thank you for that extra effort.
Thank you, Matt.
I attended events 3, 4, 7, 12, 16, 19, and 30. Don's listening. Congrats to all of our retirees who recognized tonight. Congrats to our sports program. We're talking about that for a second, and I won't say why. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Stacy.
The same. I think I was with Dawn on everyone's, except for one. There was one that she mentioned. I was not in attendance. But I will add one more, that I want to say thank you to Mrs. Hock on the presentation for the Max Prep for the soccer. I did attend that one, and it was great. I think it was, some of the kids were interviewed, which I thought was wonderful. I was able to see some of those videos on the Max Prep website. So it was a great honor for them. And I think even some of the parents were like, "Okay, they're done celebrating the soccer victory." But it was still great. It was still a lot of fun. And again, all those activities that we were able to attend, they really were great. So I really appreciate it. And I want to wish our lead students this week, they'll be leaving next Wednesday for a fabulous trip to Maryland and the DC area. So I wish them good luck. Have a good night.
Anthony?
Well, I got to meet Santa Claus and Frosty the Snowman and the Lord. And I will be taking the lead role in the Lunchtime Theater at the Smith Clove production of Peanut Butter Rhino this Friday. So have a great night.
A must-see.
Peanut Butter Rhino.
Peanut Butter Rhino. You play the rhino?
I do. I'm the lead role.
Dan?
I'm tired of the cold and the dark. That's about it. I'm done.
Boy, you sure are. Elsie?
I want to start by thanking Jill for her presentation. I don't think that, where's Jill? You didn't give yourself enough credit for the change in culture. I think that's the most important piece when you're trying to change the way that people operate. So thank you. I mean, even I will sit in my office if the light is, daylight is there and turn the lights off. It's not that I'm trying to hide from anyone, but it's saving energy. And I think that those are the things that we have to do, and so thank you for that.
You do work by candlelight.
I do sometimes. Yes, I do.
Burning the both ends.
Correct. I want to read a letter. We often get, I want to read a letter because I think it's really positive, and it speaks to the work that we're doing in this district. I'm not going to say who the parent is, but I think it's really important for everyone to hear. On Wednesday, January 6th, we attended the transition meeting for parents of fifth-grade students receiving special education service who will be transitioning to the middle school in September. As is the case with many parents of children needing support, there can be some level of concern when making a transition to a new school, teacher schedule, et cetera. We were eager to hear what the middle school team had to say about making this leap. We want you to know how impressed we were with the team, relieved, enlightened by the clarity of information they had to share, and absolutely supportive by their concern for all of our children. It is clear that this team works cohesively to ensure the best possible supportive transition for all students, no matter where they are in the realm of needing support. From mild learning deficiencies to the most significant physical developmental challenge, this team is ready, impressed indeed. And I thought that was something that I should share, because we are a really good school district, and we really care about every child. And this letter was very special to me, because it talks about our special ed students and what we do. And I love the fact that she, that they wrote, that we want to make sure that every child feels, no matter what the need is, that we're going to address their needs. So I just wanted to share that letter with you. On another note, we had three of our teachers, New York State, the New York State English Council awarded Tom Lee, who's a social studies teacher at the high school, and Todd Hyman, who's an English teacher at the high school, the Collaboration of Excellence for their 10th Grade Humanities Program. So congratulations to them. And then we also had Matt Hodges, who was awarded the Early Career Scholarship. So congratulations, Matt Hodges. And then Max Prep, who came out last week, comes out with a list every year of the top 100 schools. And Monroe Woodbury came out number 35 for the top athletic program. So...
In the nation.
In the nation. Oh, in the nation.
In the nation.
Correct. In the nation. Thank you, Eric.
Number two in New York.
Number two in New York. So congratulations. And yes, Lori is sitting over there going, "Number two." Yes, Lori, number one next time, but...
First loser.
No, and just, just, good job. You know, I'm only kidding. Not really, but anyway. Good stuff. And have a good night, and thank you.
John, I think everyone here would also like to, you know, welcome you back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry I've been away. I missed all of these. I feel like Humpty Dumpty, but I've been put back together again, thanks to...
I have one more thing.
What?
I'm sorry. Dawn, there's a lot of things we have to say. So North Maine is a finalist in a nationwide campaign sponsored by Dannen, Project Fit America, and Shop Right. You're going to be hearing about this. They're one of the 50 schools, I think, nationwide, who were selected. And if they win, they get $25,000 towards playground equipment, which they desperately need. So you will hear more about what you need to do. Stay tuned. But we, as a community, need to support this, because this is going to be a wonderful thing for North Maine. And Joe is looking at, do you want to say anything, Jill?
No, you gotta walk out.
So, and it's really the work of, again, the athletic department, Mr. Cotto, Mr. Roger, Mr. Rogers, sorry.
It's his neighborhood, right?
And Carol, but Carol's going to make sure that we win, right, Carol?
Nope.
I love it. So yes, congratulations. And thank you to the middle school administration, because, yes, you mentioned how our custodians came in at 4:00 in the morning to make sure this happens.